Hello, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting in order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Okay, we'd like to start with some reports. Jason, Sarah, and Kelly aren't able to be with us today, so we just have the four of us, which is still a quorum. We start off with graffiti night in the art club.
Oh, okay, there we go. It's a little bit more fancier than what I have in the auditorium. Different buttons. All right, so I have the pleasure of introducing Ms. Morgan Siktish, who is one of our art teachers in the junior/senior high school, along with Ms. Izzy House and Ms. Riley Kephart, who are from our art club. And they're going to be talking about literally what they've been up to in the art department. They have some great things to share. So without further ado.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to start us off. My name is Morgan Siktish. I am the high school art teacher, and I also have the pleasure of being the high school art club advisor. So to start us off, this is just some images from our middle school art show. So this includes students in grades five through eight. We were able to exhibit more than 60 art pieces this year from those students. And this is a range of students from Mrs. Daniels' classes, Ms. Dow's, and then I have a couple eighth graders as well. This is our high school art show. I have the names listed down at the bottom. We had more than 40 students participate in this one. And this is a juried art show for the high school. It's the 43rd annual, and it takes place in Newark. So you'll see up here, these are the award winners for the 2D category, so anything from drawing and painting to photography. So our first-place winner is Izzy House, who is here with us tonight. We have second-place Cora Kahoon, and Devon Rose came in third place. We also had honorable mentions go to Karen Aguilera-Mario, Ethan Ren, and Kimmy Cervantes. Our 3D category, we have Jackie Gans, Carson Hogan, and Casey Maki in first, second, and third. And then we also have honorable mentions going to Malia Cromarty, Sterling Shaw, and Trixie Trumble. And this is juried by a local artist. They get a new artist every year to come in, so it's like fresh eye on the artwork. And I'm very glad that I don't have to be the one to judge it. Okay, and now I am going to pass it over to our art club president.
Hi, I'm Riley Kephart. Here we are talking about Graffiti Night, which is a high school talent show that has stage painting, a dance-off, and trash and fashion, and of course, the senior art show. Oh, there it goes. We had acts from 7th grade all the way to 12th grade. We even had some staff included as well, including Ms. Cotel singing a duet and a solo. We also had, there it goes, Mr. Ladelfa modeling a student's design. All these designs you see are from high school students and art club members. Next, we had live-stage painting. While the acts are going on, we have art club members and some teach art club trip to New York City. On our first day, we went to the Metropolitan, okay, Museum of Art. And on our way there, we did get rained on, but the museum was great. On our second day, we went to the Museum of Modern Art and the Empire State Building. Both amazing places. Here we have some pictures from the Empire State Building on the, what, first floor, I'm pretty sure? You can see Ms. Bueller in the corner there. While at the Empire State Building, we met King Kong, well, his hand. And our gorgeous view on, all the way at the top. Very windy that day, very windy. I'm going to hand this over back to Ms. Siktish.
And that is all that we have for you, unless there's any questions? No?
I just wanted to comment that, you know, this is one of the first times in many, many years we've had the art program or art club here. And it's very well-deserved for you to be here. You do some amazing things. You know, I've had the opportunity to visit the art shows, you know, over the past couple of years. And, you know, our kids just do some amazing, amazing things that I wouldn't even know where to start. But you're very involved. You do a lot of wonderful things. And we just want to thank you for, you know, for bringing the love of the arts to our kids. You know, the arts program is extremely important. And, you know, we certainly have one here to be very proud of. So thank you for being here and sharing that. And, you know, girls, we just have a little token of appreciation for you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Our next on the agenda is to meet the candidates. Jason regrets not being able here with us tonight, but he wanted to know that how important he felt being part of the board is. And I believe he had an email sent, but I didn't receive it. So I'll just read just two candidates, right? Just me and Jason? Okay. And I wrote a little something, but I'm just going to read it so make sure I don't screw it up.
Let's see. My name is Jeff Martinez, as you all know, and I'm seeking reelection of the Board of Education. It's been an honor to serve on the board for the past six years. During this time, I've learned just how vital collaboration is to the success of our school. When I first ran for the board, I did so because I wanted to be part of positive changes that were happening in our district. I believed then, and I still believe now, that the most effective way to achieve this is lasting improvements by working together. I'm proud of the progress we've made, and I remain committed to supporting our students, staff, and administrators. Together, we can continue to provide the highest-quality education for every student in our district. And thank you for your continued support.
And next, we'll go for the DIBELS overview.
Good evening. We're looking to talk to you this evening, about, for about 10 minutes, about our new assessment that we're using in SOTUS called the DIBELS. It is an assessment we have used previous years ago, probably as many as 20 years ago. So some of our teachers had familiarity with it. This is the assessment that's replacing the Fountas and Penel assessment that we've been giving for approximately the 20-year gap between the two. And we wanted to just share a little bit with you about how this implementation is going. We have a couple of teachers who volunteered to join us because I think hearing from them is really very valuable. So when we started this, it was probably two years ago, we started looking at replacing the assessment. And it was this March that we asked teachers to implement it for the first time. And it was a big lift to ask teachers, you know, in March, things are really busy in a school. And we wanted to get this tool in teachers' hands. It was supposed to be simple, and we didn't want to build a lot of anxiety around it. We also wanted to be collecting data on students, data that is aligned with the science of reading. So we dove in. Teachers did a phenomenal job of getting this assessment, the benchmark, baseline data for this assessment. And we're going to be benchmarking it end of school year this year with it. So we'll have that. This summer, we're going to go into learning about how to read the reports. But I wanted to just share a little bit about our process in, whoops. How do I get it back up to slideshow? Thank you. So for considerations for our new literacy assessment, as I said, we wanted it to be certainly anchored in the science of reading. We know that we have to certify our curriculum by September 1st of this year saying that everything is aligned with the science of reading. And, you know, we tried to keep it simple. We know that students are assessed a lot, and we are really being thoughtful about trying to minimize how long assessments take. So we certainly took that into consideration. And we know that that's work we continue to need to define. We want to make sure we're not over-assessing kids or double-assessing kids in any way. So teachers are going to be a part of helping us create an assessments calendar this year, or this summer for next school year, so we can be really thoughtful about that. All right, so we chose the DIBELS because it does measure phonemic awareness, phonics fluency, and comprehension. And those are areas that are recommended for us to be regularly assessing. It is a fast assessment in that each subtest only takes one minute to give to a student. So you'll see at the upper-grade levels, 2nd through 6th grade, the students may take three or two subtests. But you can see in K and 1st, those grades have a lot of subtests. So when you look through them, you see the letter naming fluency, the phonemic segmentation fluency, the nonsense word fluency, and the word-reading fluency. That looks like a lot, and it is a lot. But it only, each one of those is one minute. And I think that that's important to remember when you see the number of tests there. So when a student and a teacher are working together, once teachers get familiar with the platform, they have reported that it's fairly fluent to get through as they use it with students. Another several reasons why we chose the DIBELS is it does generate reports for our teachers. They are not spending their time hand-analyzing things. It generates it, and you'll get to see some examples of what those reports look like. It recommends instructional groupings. It's nationally-recognized and normed. And there's ongoing professional development and support, which teachers will be getting this summer right from the company. It will maintain that relationship as we continue to learn about how to best use this with students. So I'm going to pass it over to Jackie.
So at the building level, this is what's something I would see if I was pulling a report. So you can see that there's each of the grade levels, and you can see, it's familiar with what you know from I R E D I. Red is below grade level, below benchmark. Yellow is below benchmark. And then green is at, and blue is above. Each subtest has different norms throughout the three times a year that it's given as a benchmark. So as we get further into this data, we'll want to see students progressing. So this is their overall somewhat average of the subtests that they took. What's great about this is when I go into this report, I can click on any of those colored bands, and it will pop up with the students that fell in that range and all their scores for the subtest, which is on our next slide. So you can see that their composite score is over in that third column. But then, as you go across, you can see what they scored and where they fell and what range, whether it was yellow, green, blue, or red, and then how it was averaged together. So we have this information on every student that took the assessment in March. We've been doing progress monitoring, and we'll also have that data for all the students that are in the building at the end of the year. So you can go into the individual student, and we can actually print reports for the families on each subtest, which is data we didn't have before to share.
Hi, I'm Celia Bishop, one of the reading teachers in the elementary school. And as a reading teacher, DIBELS has given me an instructional tool to use with students and has not taken much time away from my instruction. And in this example, I see that the student's fluency, her ORF, is at benchmark. That's that green color there. And, but she needs instruction in phonics and sight words. And through progress monitoring, the colored bands are her benchmarking, and the next two columns are her progress monitoring. So I can see that she's making gains in those areas. One of the other things that I like about benchmark, or DIBELS, is that I can off-level progress monitor. So students in art able to access that grade-level material, I can bench, I can progress-monitor them where they are and still see growth in them. And I think it's going to have a positive impact on our students.
DIBELS was completely new to me this year. This was my first time ever using it. I know that other teachers have had different experiences with it. The online documenting for the oral reading fluency assessment made grading and categorizing the students incredibly easy, which is something that you can see in my picture that I provided. The data, like being that color-coded, it's like a quick snapshot. I don't have to kind of dig in to figure out where my students are based on each category. And then I also asked my students, since they are the ones being assessed, what their perspective was on this, just their opinion and their feedback. And I did include those quotes. And my students were saying that they enjoyed how it didn't feel like they were testing forever, that it was pretty quick and easy. My second student, I'm going to brush over just for a minute. My third student said that they really liked doing the maze challenge. It's essentially doing context clues as fast as possible for different vocabulary-based words. My students think it's like a challenge or a game. They asked if we can do it all the time because they think it's a good warm-up. And then going back to my second student, they said that they had more nerves regarding the DIBELS testing. They were nervous that within that one minute, that they wouldn't be able to show all the things that they wanted to know or that they did know. And so something that I did to combat like that speed reading or rushing was that instead of notifying the student that their time was up, the minute has passed, I documented it on my computer silently and just let them continue the passage so they didn't feel that they were cut off, so to speak. And that's something that really eliminated that speed reading or that rushing. So overall, I have a pretty positive experience with it.
All right, so we wanted to collect some quotes. Don't worry, I am not going to read these two slides to you. But we did want to pull out just from a variety of grade levels and positions, you know, some of the pieces of the quotes that our teachers were saying. So a 6th grade teacher, ELA teacher, says, you know, that it really helped her to inform her instruction because it allows her to assess her students' literacy skills in a quick way, but it's also very comprehensive. We had a team of kindergarten teachers who said that their class results from the DIBELS matched their other classroom assessments and intervention students' results. And so they were happy to see that where they thought their students were from other literacy or ELA assessments also showed that way with the DIBELS. So it seemed to really be a comparable assessment to what we've been doing and allowed them to dig in deeper. We also got a quote from our intermediate, one of our intermediate school reading teachers. She said, "Having the assessment online makes grading and gathering the data more efficient because it does score the assessments and generates the individual reports," which Casey had talked about, the online piece. But also Heather mentioned that this summer, part of our professional development will be actually being able to read those reports and see how to use them. And then we had a 3rd grade teacher who really liked the fact that the data is in real time. So instead of having to wait to analyze your students' results, you could look right away because everything that the teacher does, the recording and all of that, is done right on the computer, on the M-Class website. So looking ahead at our professional development and implementation of this, so the reading teachers and administrators, we had a professional development session with the company on February 4th so that we could learn how to administer the DIBELS assessment and then in turn, turnkey it to all of our teachers at team meetings. The teachers gave those original assessments in March, and that's when we got feedback. We were checking in just to see, you know, what were their questions? Where, you know, were they, what were the positives? What were the things that they were confused about? And we wanted to be really incredibly clear and supportive with that. And then after they gave it, we had follow-up meetings, either with individually or as teams, to get their feedback on the assessments that they gave. We will also give them again in June so that we have the end-of-the-year data, and we can start showing that here. And then this summer, as I already mentioned, we are going to have professional development, which is already scheduled, and people are signing up for, to analyze that data and to see what our next steps are. Any questions?
Yeah, this could be a question for anybody. Sometimes I find from my position, it's a little bit hard to distinguish between stuff like FNP and this. And was it FNP that this replaced?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess my question would be like, besides, I think one thing that I heard was that you had to align with the science of reading, find something that did that better. But as you thought about those two side by side, like, what were some of the things that you found to be a positive of this over and against FNP?
So the FNP did provide valuable data, and I want to be cautious to suggest that it didn't because it gave us a lot of insight into kids' comprehension and vocabulary skills. It also gave us insight into their fluency. The difference is the DIBELS gives us more specific skill reports that allow us to really pinpoint where a student needs growth. So when a student took an FNP or a Fountas and Penel, they got a letter. And within that letter, there was a whole bunch of skills that teachers had to focus on. And, you know, you didn't get as narrow or as specific, which is why sometimes we weren't seeing kids grow from one level to the next. Where this report shows us that kids actually might be blue above grade level in some areas, but red in another. And so when a teacher looks at that student, they can say, "I need to work on this specific area to tighten that up, to help move the whole, the whole reading experience forward." This is also, this is also a lot, I mean, again, I'm not trying to just harp on faster, but a DIBELS assessment at the upper grade levels could take upwards of 40 minutes in assessment. And this, again, is one minute per subtest. Oh, Fountas and Penel, I'm sorry. That was confusing.
Just a quick question, Ms. Philbrook. So going back to student number two, you pause it at that point, right, and let them continue? So obviously, we haven't done it enough. But, so you have that first grade. The goal is to try not to rush them through it, right? But we kind of do have to rush through it. You have a minute. Is that, I'm...
You have a minute, yeah.
Right, so I'm hoping that we're going to be able to see that they're actually progressing through there. But at the same time, we kind of, you have one minute to complete the task. So you can only slow it down so much. I understand that we're, you know, we're stopping it at this point, letting them keep going with it to take out any anxiety and stuff like that. But it is kind of a, it's a rush, I mean, you have a minute, right? So you have to, I'm hoping that that data keeps going where these kids know that you're being graded on a minute worth, not however long it takes you to finish that passage.
So the student doesn't see the timer, only the teacher does.
Right, but they're only graded up to a minute, correct?
Yep, they are. We used to use stopwatches back 20 years ago, and that created a lot of anxiety because it was like, I mean, you think about starting a race with a stopwatch. And I know that this was a newer assessment. The words per minute is normed. So kids are expected to read X number of words per minute at a certain grade level, at certain grade-level texts. So we're not looking for them to try to read faster necessarily, but just read at a fluency rate that's grade-appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the information. You guys had a chance to take a look at the Resolution Kit. and all the information that they included on there? Yeah, just, yeah, survey, a lot of questions. Moving on to public participation. No one? Okay. No matter what the question, I will move on to consensus motion number one. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Ryan?
Second.
Eric?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consensus motion number two. Can I have a motion? He did, yes. Second? Yep, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that if you see 12.1, that's the student board member. So I had an opportunity to present that to the 712 student body. I guess it was a couple of weeks ago now. And thankfully, our student council advisors, Jen Young and Lisa Miller, are assisting with that. I spoke to them today, and they still have, I think, until next week for students to actually turn in their petitions, to actually be on the ballot. So far, there are already our two students who actually turned and signed petitions. And it's been on the announcements every day, so there's a lot of reminders going out to students. So hopefully, we'll maybe even have a couple more sign up. And, you know, as noted, the students are required to do a campaign speech on Spring Fest morning. And then the student bodies, this year's grades 8 through 11, will actually vote and elect that member. The other thing that's happening on the regional level is you've been working with other superintendents in the Local School Boards Association, and we're looking to actually put together a student board member training for all of the student board members in our region, hopefully sometime in August. So we'll also have a nice training component for the student that's selected, you know, when they start. So it's moving along nicely, and I thank everybody for their help with that.
All right, thanks, Nelson. So for consensus motion number two, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And public participation? Nothing? Consensus motion number three, can I have a motion? Jim? Second?
Second.
Ryan? All in favor?
Aye.
And Nelson, set agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, so for the next meeting, this is our awards meeting. So each building principal will be awarding, you know, handing out awards to students in their buildings. It'll also be an opportunity for us to recognize all of those retiring from the district. And then lastly, we have a number of CSEA TAs and teachers in the SFA that will be awarded tenure. So we got a lot of great things happening at the June meeting.
Okay, great, thanks. Consensus motion number four. Anticipated session to discuss the position of a particular person. Can I have a motion? Jim, second?
Second.
Okay, great, thanks, everyone.